Okay, yes. Yes. I'm sure not that it wasn't. So I found it.
Where'd you go?
Oh, the big entrance.
I want to call up and. Quick escape.
Wow.
So Chris, we were just discussing the fact that the package didn't go out. I found out thirty minutes ago from Melanie that we have a meeting.
Yeah.
Website there, we're converting the website right now, so there's an issue that will be fixed with the conversion. It's happening because of that, so it's temporary. But the packet's always available online.
That's what I did Sunday. I must have deleted that email when I found it. On the town.
Yeah, it's there. I knew it was there.
Town council fired us up.
It is five thirty-two, and I called the meeting of March the fifth to order. Can we get roll call?
Mr. Gerard. Mr. Fractor.
Present.
Mr. Geller. Mr. Lees.
Here.
Ms. Proper. Mr. Gara.
Here.
Ms. Gort.
Here.
Are there any changes to the minutes? Change. Okay. Page eight of the packet, page six of the minutes. Right at the top of the page, I'm talking. Who's who's listening? It says, as well as real historic buildings much older than that, then the word is were with an asterisk, and it should just be W E R E, were really falling apart and were historic, not we are. That's all I had. Okay, then we will approve the minutes as they stand corrected by Mr. Gerard. Any changes to the agenda, staff?
There are no changes.
Okay. As part of certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation in issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Is there nobody here? If there's anyone attending by phone remotely, press star nine on your phone and then star six to unmute yourself. We have anybody out there? Okay. First up on the consent calendar. Bless you. Is the pop of residents. PL dash twenty twenty-four dash oh oh two four.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call up this project to discuss the driveway.
Yeah.
Before we go any further, I need to disclose that the applicant's architect is my former wife and business partner. However, I have no financial interest in this project whatsoever. If anybody has a problem with that, please speak now.
Steve moved to bring that up. Does anybody have a second to that?
Oh, second.
Susan, can we get a vote?
All right. Uh, Mr. Lees.
Yes.
Ms. Gort.
Yes.
Mr. Gerard.
Yes.
Mr. Fractor.
Yes.
Mr. Geller. Ms. Proper.
Yes.
Mr. Gara.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so the pop-up residence is a new single-family residence, and you said you wanted me to focus on the driveway. Okay. Um, so staff recommends negative four points for the driveway, which is a longer driveway with excessive site disturbance due to the location of the garage being in the rear of the house. And um, the driveway length is a total of two hundred and fifty feet, which is a paving area of three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five square feet, roughly eight point seven percent of the site. And um, so this house is a six-bedroom, five-point-five bath, and it has a three-car garage, um, as well as one wood burning fireplace, two gas fireplace, and an outdoor fire pit and outdoor barbecue. Um, so to offset the negative four points, the applicant is proposing positive two points for achieving energy savings between twenty and thirty-nine percent of the above the twenty eighteen I E C C standards, so hers. And then um, staff assigns positive three points for um, three E V chargers that will be installed in the garage.
Do we have any questions from staff on the panel? Alan.
I have no questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Thank you. Ellie, if you could pull up the site plan, which would be, is that one point one what you've got up there?
Yes, I can zoom in further.
So I I think it's no secret that I don't favor these long driveways when they there are a lot of alternatives that have much less site disturbance, but having said that, I I think Ellie, you did a great job in your report of addressing the comparables and the history of how we've assigned points. This one seemed a little unique to me for the reason of the I'm going to call call it cutting or what appears to be cutting. If we look at the upper or maybe middle third of the driveway where it appears they're proposing to cut quite a bit into six to eight feet of hillside without retaining walls where there may be a lot less site disturbance if they put a retaining wall in. So I see where your cursor is there. And if you if you're to find the say, right at the edge of where the house comes across at this ninety-six seventy-two mark, it looks like they're going to scrape off a six-foot section of the hillside there. When you look at seven R graph C, it talks about retaining walls are encouraged rather than cutting and or fill. Depart what's the planning department's thought on why they shouldn't have to just put that retaining wall in rather than cut that whole hillside off?
Um. I mean, so some of this grading is probably necessary to get it to the right height for the driveway and um, they it may have just been slightly easier to do the grading specifically in this longer stretch than just have a small retaining wall in that area. I do know that the applicant or the the property owner is not a big fan of retaining walls, so they were trying to reduce the number of retaining walls that they could that they were using, and they did want to, they tried to minimize the site disturbance from the driveway as much as possible. The um, grading and the driveway had um, like there was more grading and more of a curve to the driveway in one of the initial proposals, and that was reduced during review.
Well, I'm still very troubled by the fact that we want to shave this hillside off, which is going to allow water runoff, probably erosion as they're trying to re-vegetate or get something to hold on that hillside where as a retaining wall would allow them to have their driveway where they want it and to not have to do that site disturbance, which is going to go out just by my rough calculations, probably twenty-five feet from the edge of the asphalt driveway up along the hillside. And I think that if you look at seven R, paragraph A says minimize site servants, site service disruption, minimize cut and fill, and C specifically promotes retaining walls rather than cutting. And maybe they don't like retaining walls, but I'm not sure that's their choice if they want this big, long driveway and smoothing out the hillside is does not seem to me to be the way to do it. Do you, I mean, is there is there a policy to have anything we can look at that they that says they shouldn't have to put a retaining wall in?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I don't think there's anything that says. I mean, there's there's a language that encourages under certain circumstances, but I think also this designer understands this commission is also re and you know, recent precedent ding them for having a long retaining wall. So I think that he was probably specifically looking at ways to not have a long retaining wall. Because it's I I think that they've been the recipient of points on the other end from having a long retaining wall. So I think I think that's probably one of the considerations they have along with the applicant's desire. I mean, I I still, you know, based on and Ellie did a great job of providing precedent for site disturbance. And negative four points because of the length of the driveway is a, you know, substantial amount of points. We didn't assess points for retaining walls because they were minimized and really only in those uh, spots. And I think, you know, some of the cut and fill is really that language. I'm I'm getting to the point in the code, but I think it was intended really for like benching sites for the actual home, not so much bringing a driveway down the grade, or there's there's also some drainage considerations too with how they're designing it. It's it's not all about the driveway, but I think if you look at development on these types of lots, you know, the impact of the site is first having first been subdivided, which is a substantial impact to the natural environment. Two is building a home on it, which is the the biggest impact to the environment. If you factor those two things in, that's the majority of impacts. And then where we 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 acknowledge there's there's better ways that you can you can build a driveway and not um, accrue negative points, but on a site like this where you're going up a, you know, a moderate hillside, wouldn't say it's the steepest hillside, but you are going to have some, you know, impacts from from the driveway. And I think you know, factoring all those items in, that's how we come to recommending negative four points for the the way the driveway is designed.
But Chris, if I understood what you're saying, part of that four points is the site disturbance of the driveway as well as the grading of that hill where there is no retaining wall.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really the totality of what it takes to build that driveway to get it to the back of the you know, the back of the site for that addition and you know, probably arguably, even if you had a a side loaded garage on the side, you would still have probably sixty seventy percent as much uh, you know, site disturbance there. But um, you know, I I think that it's been well documented that our precedent recently has ratcheted up these points for it, and I think our recommendation is consistent with you know, kind of the guidance that the the planning commission has provided us on this the subject, but I I guess we wouldn't not be supportive of having additional points beyond negative four based on this design.
Well, honestly, I'm not recommending additional points. I'm recommending a requirement that they use a retaining wall rather than than shaving off the hillside. And if it's necessary to have a retaining wall, which has been our finding in the past, then that's factored in. I'm happy with the four points, but it seems to me like I think it's uh, I think it's cost engineering. They don't want to build the retaining wall because of the cost, and they'd rather scrape off the hillside and let it erode. And I think that's the wrong approach. And I think it's not consistent with seven R C that encourages the retaining walls rather than the cut. So that just that's where I'm coming from. And why I'm wondering why we don't look at that.
This um, on the screen is one of the precedents that I referenced in my staff report, the Shocket residence. And you can see these blue lines, so they did end up doing a bit more grading around the edge of the driveway rather than doing more retaining walls for this house, and they also received negative four points.
So um, yeah.
Oh, you.
What's curious is that's on one side. You know, typically you have a cut and fill, but what's really curious about this driveway is it's cut. It's almost like a big trench. And it's cut three to four feet on the uphill side and two to three feet on the downhill side. And I think the reason it's a big trench is they're trying to stay at the eight percent grade. But it it is a a very odd driveway design and doesn't isn't going to look good as a finished product because it goes down and then the driveway and then it goes back up. So it's it really is sort of a bobsled run.
Um, as far as the design for the driveway, kind of speaking to that, um, the left side of the site is much steeper, so they had to come in from the right side to deal with that grade. Um, and then they um, they are at eight percent for their slope right in this middle section, so they're already at the highest slope that they can be at. And they were trying to reduce the amount of curvature to the driveway to reduce the site disturbance. And then there's also um, some existing smaller trees that were planted by the previous property owner that they're really trying to preserve because these trees are like already um, planted and kind of growing in and they're irrigated. Um, so they're really trying to make sure they don't take out those trees with the driveway.
So I went and looked at this site today. Um, knowing that this we'd be talking about the driveway today. And I concur with what Ellie's saying, so I looked at that and and could clearly see that the driveway did need to go in on that side. Because if you try to bring it in anywhere else, you're going to have huge cut bank to get on there. Remember that the requirement is twenty feet. What are we allowed to have on on a slope on the first twenty feet? Has to be a right angle five five percent. And then again, it has to drop down to that two percent when you when you get to the top. So it's it's a, the math is always tough, and I've built a lot of these and we struggle with it in getting these driveways to work. That said, um, it seems to me that that I I I concur with the planning staff that it that it meets the requirements of seven R. I would like to address the aesthetic value because it seems like a lot of people here are talking about that. What does it look like? To me, cutting the the cutting back the the grade on either side is much better looking than than a huge rock wall. Rock walls jump out at me. I always try to reduce rock walls as much as I can when I'm building. If it shows a a a long rock wall, if I can get away with with getting away, and it's not about finance, it's about what is it? What does it look? And operationally, once the project's done and you're trying to plow, rock walls are problematic. It 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 really hurts your ability to 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 have a a safe and functional driveway. So I'm I'm very against rock walls in that way. So I see this as also, I don't see a twenty-five percent or twenty-five foot back. Um, you know, what do you you've got to do with two to one? Is it two to one on a on a cut bank? Yeah, two to one, so.
Probably ten or twelve.
Twelve, ten or twelve, but that's half of twenty-five. So let's let's be realistic about what we're getting. And then again, runoff. I have put in probably thirty silk fences on properties that I'm doing work on, and I've only had one small section of silk fence for runoff ever be needed. We are way over the top on on um, on erosion control. It's just not really an issue around here. I got I just got to say that. It just I've never seen it be a big issue. Now, on big projects, it can be an issue, but on these projects in the Highlands, I've never seen it. I think I've done. What do I have now? Twelve thirteen houses in the Highlands, and I just haven't had had the problem. So my point about all this is I know that I know that a lot of people have problems with these long driveways, and I get that. But what are we really talking about? As long as we're meeting the the code, what are we really talking about? We talk about site disturbance and 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 the visual impact of the project. In my view, the visual impact is less here. You can you're you're going to re-vedge that. It it's going to lay back after a couple of years. You won't even really know what happened. You put a big, big old retaining wall in there, and it's a huge visual impact. That's my two cents on on the driveways.
So following up on that, could we have Ellie speak to us about the re-vedge requirements at the cut?
Um, they are proposing some trees in that area and then they are going to be having adding native seed mix at all disturbed locations. So they would be having new seeding going in in those areas to re-vegetate.
And spread the top soil that's stripped for the driveway across the cut?
I believe so.
So all disturbance areas are required to be re-vetched, and that includes uh, top soil. It's rare that we use the top soil on the project. I'm speaking as a contractor here because there's nowhere to haul to to store it, so we almost always haul it off and 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 dispose of it. But yes, that is a requirement to have a a revenge.
That's kind of a shell game of moving.
It is. Yeah, it is. Um, yeah, I mean, I I I like the idea of trees on it within reason, but that's my two cents.
Anything else, Mike? No, but thank you. Any com questions or comments, Susan?
No, no questions.
Right. Any further discussion from the panel? Alan, do you have any further comments?
No, I uh, comments just, I went and looked at the site. I know there's the kind of almost like a steep berm from the road. So I I'm wondering how much you're going to even see the driveway when you're driving on the road or walking on the road. I do think it's going to be a toboggan run. I think uh, I think they'll be sliding down and hopefully they can get some traction before they make that left-hand turn coming down the driveway. And uh, because if they're plowing the snow on the uphill side of the driveway, it's going to melt right down onto it and freeze at night, but that's uh, that's the owner's issue. So otherwise, I had no other comment.
I I have no comment.
Any further comments, Steve? No, I just think we have a little bit of a conflict here with the idea of our code saying we should use retaining walls rather than cuts.
No further comments, thank you.
Mike, any further comments?
No.
Thank you, Chair.
Susan, any further comments?
Nothing.
And I have no comments, so. Um, can we have a motion to um?
Actually, since it's it's called up, I'm not sure if anyone is online or anything, we have to we have to open up the public comment.
Mine. Here, let me allow and talk if you would like to. Uh, you should be able to unmute Andy.
Hey, Andy.
Yeah, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
We can now.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. Um. Yeah, so I don't really have much.
Follow the, Andy, have you been able to follow the comments that have been made about the driveway so far?
Yeah, I have, you know, and um, I I think they're all good comments. It's obviously a very tricky site, uh, as anybody that's been by uh, noticed, and we worked directly with the HOA. We tried several different driveway designs and worked with the HOA, uh, the neighbors specifically about where the where the driveways were going to intersect, and this was the driveway that everybody was sort of able to agree on. You know, we have to kind of contour up straight from the road in order to get up to the top of that bank. If we go straight into it, it's a ten-foot bank on either side of the driveway. So we have to kind of contour that way where we have that little bit of retaining wall. And as far as the balance between retaining wall and cut slope uh, as you go up the driveway, you know, I I think both sides of the argument were spoken well today, and and we're kind of right. You know, we're trying to balance that as well. Um, we're trying to minimize. It wasn't really a budget consideration, but just trying to minimize the amount of retaining wall where it's not necessary. Uh, you know, there there we could line the whole driveway with with retaining wall and make all the grading easy, but we didn't really think that's what was going to look best on this site. So we did try to grade back that middle section. Uh, if it's the planning commission's uh, position that we should add some retaining wall, we can do that. Uh, you know, it it would probably reduce the overall site disturbance, but maybe increase the the visual impact of the retaining wall. So um, you know, we're willing to work with with you guys and staff on on finding that right balance, but that's all we were trying to do there. It wasn't wasn't financial, just trying to trying to figure out what was going to work there to get up to that site. But um, other than that, if anybody has any specific questions, I don't really have anything else to address. But uh, just just looking forward to to hearing hearing your final opinions on that driveway. Thanks.
Any questions from uh, anyone on the commission panel for the architects? No questions. No questions. Andy, it looks like we're good here.
Okay, thanks, guys.
All right. Do we take a motion to approve this?
Looking at me. I got to find the number.
AI move, we approve P L dash two oh two four dash zero zero two four. Anything else I need to say?
Attached findings and conditions.
Attached and attached fine, oh, with the attached finding and and conditions.
Yes.
And a pass. And a passing score of plus one.
Can we get a vote?
Mr. Giller.
Yes.
Ms. Proper.
Yes.
Mr. Gara.
Yes.
Mr. Lees.
Yes.
Ms. Gort.
Yes.
Mr. Gerard.
Convinced by Mr. Gera, this project still concerned about the precedent.
Well, know that reluctantly.
It's a lowercase y.
Mr. Fractor.
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously.
Discussion.
It, it is on both sides.
Keeps the issue out there.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, you know, we need to be cognizant of all these pros and cons of all these issues, so. Move on to the town council summary if you guys are ready.
Well, of interest at the last, uh, plan or town council meeting. Um, for those who are golfers, they're gonna increase the fees slightly this year. But just by a few dollars, like, looks like forty-eight to fifty dollars, forty-eight dollars now, fifty dollars. So there you go. If you want to know all the details, it's in the council packet. So there was that discussion. Um, we had a discussion about, um, the food and beverage. That was taken forward by engineering public works. So the food and beverage is looking, we're looking at a pilot program. That would put a temp, fairly large temporary structure on the Tiger Drudge Lot. Um, nor, so south of the Riverwalk Center, that horseshoe and, um. It would have six loading bays in it. So the intent is to. Take the trucks off of the alleys and the roads and have the trucks go to this. Program transit temporary structure. And then from there, there's a company that would. Be running that and then take these three electric carts. And they would take the actual deliveries to the restaurants themselves. Um, and eliminate the need for the trucks to be kind of all over the place. Sort of like just, yeah, loading dock. Everything kind of comes off of there and then it gets carted off to the appropriate restaurants that. Um, with the appropriate shipments. Ideally, that's all gonna be happening, um, in the morning. This company is called one O six West that would be running this pilot program for us. Um, they do this in Vale already. Um, and it works really, really well in Vale. And they are able to kind of get the trucks in and out of town. They tend to come in the mo- they come in the morning. Get all the deliveries dropped off and then this company takes it over and, and delivers it locally here. Um, with these electric carts. So they would be looking at, um, six bays in that. And running it Monday through Saturday. And what else? This is a voluntary program for the food and beverage, um, industry here in town.
Are they gonna pay a fee for that?
I believe that they will pay some kind of fee, but it is a pilot program, so they're not gonna. I'm sure charge full freight by any means at this point, um, to test this out.
I thi- I think part of the fee is actually on the, actually the, the, the vendors that are delivering. Because what it's showing is by only having to go and deliver once, they're actually saving time. On the routes for suspending all day, kind of going around town. So and kind of the trade-off, these, they. Pay basically your docking fee, I think is the. And, and I think initially from what I, what was stated at the, um, council presentation. I think it's to be a reduced because it's, it's a trial, but then as, as they get going, then they'll probably decide on what their appropriate. Appropriate fees are.
So the intent of it is also to improve the pedestrian bicycle safety and vehicular safety in town. Um, by getting rid of these trucks as well. And they anticipate. Breckenridge apparently is one, a difficult route for truck drivers. And maybe the, one of the lower desirable routes. And now it would be a very highly desirable route too, so. They're looking forward to that as far as the trucking companies. They, they do anticipate a lot of cooperation with that.
Now that feedback comes from who? The restaurateurs, the vendors themselves?
I mean, it's not a project that planning is doing, but.
Feedback you just gave that it's a difficult route, undesirable route.
Trucking companies is my understanding and that's happened in Vale too, with this same. Vendor, that one O six West.
The drivers for the vendors.
So yeah, the trucking companies prefer to just drop everything off and leave instead of going to individual. You know, carting it off those big trucks and things like that and driving down the alleys and.
Just the main street or all the restaurants in the historic district?
There, it has some limitation as far as the range, but, um. I do not believe it goes. Um, over across the highway, um, to like. Main Street Station or anything, but I think they're still playing with that. So. This is, was just sort of a proposal to get confirmation from the town council that they want to do this. Um, and they did get, um, that approval. So, um. You will all be seeing this soon, um, because they want to get this up and running this, um, summer. So. It will be a town project, um, temporary pilot program, so.
How many parking spaces do we lose?
We lose that horseshoe.
That's a lot. It's right now, it's all employee parking.
If the pilot is successful, would the permanent staging spot be in the same location?
We don't know yet.
And then what are the vehicle, the little electric carts? What are those?
They're like, uh, the ones that they use in Vale are manufactured by Club Car. And, um. You know, it's, it's larger than like a golf cart. Um, it's kind of like the next, I guess, tier up. And it's kind of got, it's, it's probably not as small as, what's the, the smaller little utility vehicles that. Um, you see running around CU and, and they're used in a lot of countries, the K trucks or whatever. It's, it's probably. Close to that size, but it's electric vehicle manufactured by Club Car and has like a flatbed on it. And you typically, if you go over the veil, you'll see them running around in the mornings before really the pedestrians are out.
You'll see that soon. Um, Sarah, did you have a date for that yet?
Positively in two weeks.
The other thing to note, uh, for planning is. The Entrada annexation was brought forward, um, to the town council as a work session item. And they're looking at, uh, uh, obviously it's tied to, um, the gondola lots, but. About forty units, one bedrooms, um, averaging about a hundred percent AMI. And they'd probably be bringing, it sounds like potentially fifteen SFEs to that site. So we're talking about. Entrada site is north of seven eleven on that vacant corner. Um, right in front of the, to the west of the storage. And, um, they went over some of the policies that they were asking waivers for. And the council was, um, that they had previously asked for, um, with the development, but we don't have. They don't have plans yet for review, um, cause it will be tweaked a bit from what we saw. Was it two years ago, I think, or a year ago? And, um, so some of the policies, the council wasn't ready to make. A call on because they wanted to see, well, what is the building height look like? Like, so, um. More to come on that as they work through that.
I, I can add to that just briefly. Um, they actually did this afternoon, about an hour before this meeting. Provide some kind of preliminary plans is to kind of show general height, circulation, building placement. Just to kind of give the council an idea of what to expect. Obviously, it's not fully. Engineered, but that satisfies some of those questions that they had when they're asking about. What's our appropriate height, what's appropriate buffer, those types of things. That's what those plans are, um, seeking to achieve. And myself and Mark will review those in the next day and kind of compare them to the previous plans to kind of, uh, relate, rela- Relay that to the council of like what the difference is, um, positive or negative. The, so there's a little bit more certainty of what they're potentially signing up for, um, through the annexation.
When it came up last time, uh, I think I suggested that. For the entrance, rather than putting it right near where the bus stop is, may negotiating an easement with the development that just, uh, north. To, so the cars going in and out are away from the bus stop. Uh, they considered that at all or?
I think they did reach out to that and they could never, you know, reach an agreement. So they, I, I think that's one thing it will be consistent with the previous one. Yeah, I mean, I think ideally that would be a great place for a shared driveway and that was definitely echoed by staff, but. If the, the owner to the north is just. I guess unwilling to, and I can't not understand the negotiations, like, I can't really say.
Yeah.
What they were, but the end result is.
Tried, yeah.
Yeah, is the, is the driveway cut is still kind of on that northern end of their own lot.
And Mark is leading up that project. If you have any questions, since he's not here, you could always follow up with him. That's all I have.
Good.
Thank you.
There's nothing else. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. It is six fourteen. Remember, meeting of March the fifth is adjourned.
Is that a record?
Yeah, let's go. I think so.